Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, April 10th, 2014. Clerk, if you'll call a roll, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Here.
Counselor Camardo?
Here.
Counselor Cuddy?
Here.
Counselor Resika?
Here.
And Mayor Quill. Here. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you remain standing for a moment, a silent prayer reflection. I'd ask you this evening, keeping your thoughts, retired police officer Sam Emme and Carol Smith, mother of former -- or city councilor Matt Smith. Thank you. We will start out as always with our public to be heard, and clerk, if you'll read our rules and regulations.
At this time, we will open the public to be heard portion of the council meeting. As a reminder, pursuant to City Council rules and procedure, prior to addressing council, speakers are asked to state their name, address, and any affiliation. Your remarks must be limited to three minutes and concern only issues involving the City Council, city government, or matters of general city concern, and all speakers before council will observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy and decorum.
Thank you. This time, is there anyone desiring to be heard? No one? It's a nice night, everyone wants to get out of here. Last call? All right. Close that portion of our meeting. Approval of meeting minutes from March 29th, 2014. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counselor McCormick. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Approve the minutes of Saturday, March 29th, 2014. Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Resika?
Yes.
And Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carried.
Now for the meeting of April 3rd, 2014. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Cuddy, seconded by Counselor Resika. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Approve the minutes of Thursday, April 3rd, 2014. Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Resika?
Yes.
And Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carried.
Thank you. Presentations and proclamations, clerk?
Sure. Proclamation tonight for the IGNITE tenth anniversary celebration. Whereas IGNITE is a program of the Chamber of Commerce governed by young professionals, and whereas IGNITE seeks to enhance the value of living and working in Keyucka County, and whereas IGNITE helps better our community through fundraising, volunteering, advocating for the community, and young professionals, and whereas IGNITE is celebrating its first ten years operating in Keyucka County, and now therefore, Michael D. Quill, Mayor of the City of Auburn, New York, on behalf of the City Council, does hereby proclaim April 15th, 2014, as IGNITE, Keyucka County's Young Professionals Day in the City of Auburn, and congratulates IGNITE on ten years of service to the City of Auburn and Keyucka County.
Thank you. We have with us this evening many members of IGNITE. I asked Mr. Dan Lovell, I believe, is the chairperson of IGNITE, if he'd come forward and accept the proclamation.
Mayor Quill and members of council, I just want to thank you for this recognition. We appreciate it, and we are happy to serve the city and the county as IGNITE, as young professionals, and we certainly invite all of you to join us at our birthday party on April 15th over at ATWALL. I'd like to see as many of you there as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
For the members of IGNITE, I know due to the Easter holiday, we've changed our meeting till next Tuesday at our normal time, so maybe you can stay a little bit later, and we'll try not to talk as long, so we'll try, we'll do our best to get over there. Thank you. Would you like to introduce your guests?
Yes, mayor and council. At a previous meeting, you'd asked for an update on the Wendell Project Energy Performance Contract, so with us tonight are members of that team. Joe, were you going to speak, or Tim?
Uh, I'll be, uh, hold on a second.
Okay. Well, let me introduce Joe Defazio and Tim Dietrich, and you guys can make your presentation.
Okay, we appreciate the opportunity to come in and talk to you about the progress that we've made on the project. Tim Dietrich is our project manager, and he'll speak to you more about the progress and the specifics. I thought I'd take a moment just to recap the history of the project, because I know there's a couple new councilors here, and you may appreciate the background. Wendell began working with the city approximately a year and a half ago. You know, we're currently in the construction phase of the project, but the project was a multi-phase, or multi-stepped approach that was taken to get to this point. The first step was a detailed study that was done. We call that the comprehensive audit. So we went through that, identified a laundry list of scope items that could be done that would save the city money, either through reductions in their operating budget, electrical savings, fossil fuel savings, natural gas, or increased revenues. We presented those findings to the city, working with city staff, and we came up with a short list of the most advantageous scope items that the city wanted to implement. So from that point, we moved into a design phase, and we designed the project. So now we're currently in the construction phase. The project is a performance-based project, and what that means is the savings or the revenue increases that we, that are realized because of the project, are used to pay for the project. All right, so that, that's a self, we call that a self-funding project. So in other words, using energy as an example, if we replace lighting, it reduces the electrical bill, electrical utility bill for a particular building. The savings, the difference from what you were paying to what you're paying now, is used to pay for that improvement. So that in a nutshell is what a performance project is. Wendell guarantees those results. In the case of a water meter project, its revenue increases. Water meters, as they age, lose accuracy. So the water meters that are being replaced now as part of our project are ten-plus years or older, ten-plus years, correct? So there's significant water revenue increases that the city can obtain, or is obtaining, or will obtain, due to the replacement of the meters, and that revenue increase helps pay, or does pay, for the cost of the improvement. The whole point of this project is that it's budget positive. It adds money to your budget. It's not budget, it's not even budget neutral, it's not budget negative, and it's not budget neutral, it's budget positive. The energy savings or the revenue increases, like I said before, are guaranteed by us. If there's a shortfall, Wendell steps up to the plate and makes it right. So that, in a nutshell, is what a performance project is. I'm going to turn it over now to Tim, who'll walk you through where we are today in the progress of the construction.
So this slide here is a slide that we presented about a year ago on the findings of our project and the proposal. It shows all the different energy measures that we are implementing under this project, the cost for those measures, the number of buildings that it, that it's being implemented in, and then at the bottom there, you'll see the program total of $6.2 million. At the very bottom of this slide, you'll see the total annual guaranteed energy savings and additional revenue increase of $616,000. So when you multiply, when you divide those two out, it results in a net payback on the project of just over ten years. On the bottom left of this slide, you'll also see what we had estimated for the NYSERTA rebate as part of this project is $90,000. So the current status, the current economics, and this slide shows a lot of good news. First, the total project cost, the project has not gone up a single penny, in fact, we expect it to go down at the end of the day. We are carrying initial contingency amount of $551,000, and we are currently carrying a contingency of just shy of a million dollars. The primary reason for that increase is the water meters that we're installing, we're able to install smaller ones than we originally anticipated. Smaller water meters means less material costs, as well as less labor cost. So that increased the contingency, that savings went back into contingency. What we're also able to do with some of that contingency money is some additional HVAC improvements at the wastewater treatment plant and at Fire Station Number Three. We're able to do some additional LED lighting and occupancy sensors in some buildings. We're able to put some insulation in Hoops Park, the building there. We were able to do some upgrades and repairs to the heat pump system here at City Hall. These are just a couple examples of some of the things that we've done with, been able to do with the contingency money without increasing project cost. Also, the initial estimated energy, I'm sorry, the initial estimated NYSERTA rebate of $90,000, we were able to work with them, and we're on target to be somewhere around $130,000 to $160,000 in rebates. So all there is good news. Here's a status of some of the energy measure implementation. These items are all completed, the lighting and lighting upgrades, going from like T-12 inefficient, T-12 to T-8 lighting. I'm going to briefly go through these, there's a handout that you have that has a little summary for each one of these measures, a little bit more detail than I'll give you, but. Energy management systems, basically controls of the HVAC in the buildings, making improvements there, putting a new boiler, two new boilers in at the wastewater treatment plant, building envelope improvements, things like locking windows and putting on weather stripping on doors to reduce drafts coming into buildings. Retro commissioning, making sure that the systems, the buildings that do have energy management systems, that they're running the way that they're supposed to be. And then base flow pumping and a ration tank feed pump bypass, which is some improvements we made at the wastewater treatment plant. And I have a slide with some pictures, and I'll go into a little bit more detail on that. So all of those have been completed to date. The ones that are still in construction are the water meter, sewer meter upgrades with automatic meter read. As meters age, like Joe said, they lose, they lose their accuracy in reporting the usage, anywhere from a half to three-quarter percent per year. So a meter that's ten years old, for example, would be underreporting the usage by five percent. A meter that's twenty years old would be underreporting by ten percent, et cetera, et cetera. The grit cyclone septicage receiving at the wastewater treatment plant, the grit cyclone is basically a device or a piece of equipment that separates the solids from the sewage. The equipment that we're installing will do it more efficiently and effectively. And then the septicage receiving, currently at the wastewater treatment plant, there's no metering system there, so it's basically the honor system. If they know how much they're depositing, they report it, you know, if they report it. This new system that we have has a ticketing, a metering, and a ticketing device, so it actually meter how much is being reported, so that you can accurately charge and bill the people that are dropping off septicage. And then finally, the electronic computer controls, which is basically a software that if staff forget to turn their computers off at night when they go home, it automatically puts it into a sleep mode to reduce the energy consumption. So I have a couple of slides of before and after pictures. Here's an example of Casey Park, the ice rink over there. We replaced, the pictures on the left show 450-watt metal halides that were replaced with fluorescent fixtures that are 218 watts. So we cut the wattage or the electricity in half in that facility, in that, in that room. We also installed occupancy sensors with metal halide, the old type of fixture, they have a long warm-up time, so typically staff would turn them on in the morning, run all day, and then turn them off at night. With the fluorescents are instant on, so when the room's not, when there's no one in the room, the occupants, occupancy sensors automatically turn off the lights. Here are some pictures of before and after for the exterior lighting. There, we replaced metal halides and high-pressure sodiums with new LED fixtures. They're long-life, low-maintenance. We went from 300-watt metal halides to 90-watt LEDs, so more than, or less than one-third of the energy for the LEDs. For the water meters, here's a before and after picture. We've to date replaced approximately 3,000 out of the 5,700 meters, and there, like I said, it's based on the loss in accuracy as they age. The wastewater treatment plant, here's a picture of two boilers before. One boiler no longer worked, the other boiler was basically held together by tape and Band-Aids, and so we put two new boilers in there with insulation, you can see in the bottom picture there, and what I hear, it's working pretty well. Building envelope improvements, I know it's hard to see on the screen, hopefully the handouts are a little bit better, but the bottom left there is Hoops Park, the building there. There's no insulation, that middle picture with the red and the blue, that's a thermal camera, it shows the heat and the cold, and what happens is obviously you lose all that heat, and it causes the snow to melt and causes icicles. And you can see the before and after picture up there. I took those pictures two weeks apart, I didn't take one picture, knock down all the icicles, and then take it again, I promise. Here's the base flow pumping and a ration tank feed pump bypass at the wastewater treatment plant. At the wastewater treatment plant, they had decommissioned their filtering, their trickling filters, and, but they still had the pumps running. There were three 125-horsepower pumps that were pumped, basically bypassing this building, or was pumping through this building. With some engineering and calculations, we determined that the pumps just prior to this had enough capacity to bypass these pumps. So what we were able to do is by doing some pipe modifications, which is kind of circled there in the after pictures, we were able to decommission three 125-horsepower pumps, so some significant energy savings associated with that one. Sounds easy, but obviously with the wastewater treatment plant, you can't take it down for a couple days, so they had to install, to do that bypass, that modification, they had to install several hundred yards of temporary bypass piping, which is what this picture here shows.
When was this, when was this done, this recently?
Yes.
Were they bypassed?
Yeah, it was about two months ago, month and a half ago. Okay, so the next steps here, obviously completing the remaining scope items that are open, the waste, the water, the water meters, and the couple, the two other measures at the wastewater treatment plant. Any remaining contingency money, there's a few items that the city is looking at to do improvements that are needed in energy, to save additional energy with contingency money. And then, once that's all complete, the project will be complete, and we'll begin the measurement and verification phase, where we will measure and verify the energy savings and the recognized revenue, and provide annual reports to the city showing that.
Just want to take one, one second to talk about the contingency and what that means. As a, as a construction project, our contract with the city requires full disclosure of all costs, it's open book. So we were able to bring in the project, we're currently at a point where the project is less costly than we had envisioned. A typical closed-book contract, those savings could end up in, as profit for the contractor. That's not the case in this type of contract. The costs are fully disclosed, the city has the ability to decide what to do with that, the savings, whether they want to roll that into additional improvements, or whether they'd like to just keep it. So I think that's an important point, because it's a very good contract that the city has with that open book requirement.
Have you discovered or found any alternative things that we should be doing because of the contingency, or have you looked at that far, or are you still waiting?
We've been meeting with, with Doug and Bill Lupien to review those, there's a, a small list of items that we have been looking at, and we're just working through that.
Okay.
Just a couple questions. When will you be providing that annual report? When will we see that, the cost savings of the project?
What we'll do is we'll have what we call a savings during construction report. So we'll provide a report that has the savings or revenue that have accrued during the construction phase. That's, like I said, it's the savings during construction report. The first-year report doesn't happen until one year after final completion.
And the second question I had, it was up to you to hire the contractors that perform the work in the city, correct?
That's correct.
Did you hire any, was there any local contractors hired for this, for these projects?
We had several contractors that were in the area that we worked with, H.J. Brandely's, M.B., Ban Giovanni, and Pasco Controls. There were a few that were specialty, that we worked with a specialty contractor for.
Lighting, anything in lighting, nothing local in, in any of that area?
Correct.
Thank you.
My interface was with InLine, and I actually had a fairly positive experience. They set up their appointment, they came at the time they, they did, it took 20 minutes, they were in and out. I received calls from, from, from several constituents that, that had, you know, varying experiences, whether, you know, positive, negative. One of the things that the city has done was come up with some kind of coordination between, between InLine and, and the workers, the employees in Auburn, so that that, that it would be more user-friendly, or everyone would be on the same page. I was wondering if that could be considered, as far as the customer service, the customer service end of thing, where, where, you know, there'd be a little bit more time and planning in how these, these projects will, will interface with the public. As I said, I had a positive experience, but there's been others that have been confused and haven't had, you know, the city employees say one thing, and InLine say another thing. So my interest is in future projects where we will be interfacing with the public, or with, with other parts of the, you know, other city buildings, that there will be some kind of, I guess, rulebook or handbook in which, okay, this is what the vendor says, this is what, you know, and it's got to be the same thing that the city employee says. So, so that, that's one of the things that I wanted to address, and it would be, I guess, a mutual understanding between the, you know, whoever the contractor is, hopefully they're local, but again, just some, some kind of, you know, approach or worksheet that they would, would follow, which is what we're using for InLine now.
Yeah, and we, we have had a number of meetings, counselor, and I think made significant progress. I think we probably underestimated the public relations part of this at the very onset, but we do have procedures now that I think are fairly uniform for every installer, and they've been cautioned about, you know, expressing opinions outside of saying the certain things that are on a checklist that is provided to the homeowner.
Yeah, that's correct, and we have implemented using basically a handout worksheet that, based on the installer's circumstance, based on the circumstances of the resident's house, they refer to that checklist, and there's four or five different items, and that's really our, our communication now, so that we are consistent.
In addition, Wendell has actually created a position, or assigned somebody to be a customer liaison, which wasn't something that we had at the beginning of the project?
We take that very seriously, you know, we don't want to have, we, we understand that we're going into people's homes, and we don't want to leave them with a bad impression of Wendell. InLine, I'm sure, doesn't want to leave a bad impression of themselves, and certainly we don't want to, you know, leave a bad impression of what the city's trying to do to help the residents. So we take that very seriously, we appreciate your feedback, and we're always looking to improve our processes, so that, you know, we can do better next time.
There's, we're going to be discussing that more this evening, but we didn't get off to a good start with the water replacement meters. There was a lot of confusion, there still is a lot of confusion on what's actually happening with the water replacement, but is there any other projects that you're going to be handling that's going to be directly impacting the general public, or is it more or less just city projects or city facilities?
Outside of the water meters, it's going to be city facilities.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second that. Very good, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public announcements?
Yes, mayor, we have a few announcements from Governor Cuomo and State Senator De Francisco regarding a citizen preparedness training program being sponsored by the state this Saturday, April 12th, 2014, beginning at 10:00 a.m. at Onondaga Community College. This two-hour training session will prepare residents to have the tools and resources to prepare for any type of disaster, respond accordingly, and recover as quickly as possible. Each family participating will receive a free citizen preparedness response kit. For more information, residents may visit on the internet, wwwprepared.ny.gov. Secondly, from the county office of planning, the Keyucka County Parks Commission is hosting a series of three public meetings as part of a process to update the Emerson Park master plan. Individuals interested in the future of Emerson Park are encouraged to attend and participate in the following meetings. Wednesday, April 23rd, 2014, Wednesday, June 11th, 2014, and Wednesday, August 27th, 2014. Each meeting?
Time of day?
Yep. Each meeting will be from 7:00 p.m. through 9:00 p.m., and each will be held at the pavilion at Emerson Park. And then a couple announcements pertaining to next week's Good Friday holiday schedule. First of all, the Auburn City Council has moved its regular weekly meeting from Thursday, April 17th, to Tuesday, April 15th, due to the observance of Holy Thursday and the Good Friday holiday. This regular business meeting of the City Council will convene at 6:00 p.m. on Tuesday, April 15th. The meeting will be held at Council Chambers, Memorial City Hall, 24 South Street, and there will be no council meeting on Thursday, April 17th. And then refuse and recycling pickup schedule has been altered for next week due to the Good Friday holiday. The City of Auburn, there will be no bagged yard waste pickup on Monday, April 14th, and then the weekly garbage pickup throughout the city will be held one day early for residents. So Area 1, which is normally picked up on Tuesday, will be picked up on Monday. Area 2, normally picked up on Wednesday, will be picked up on Tuesday. Area 3, normally picked up on Thursday, will be picked up on Wednesday. And then Area 4, normally picked up on Friday, will be picked up on Thursday. There will be no refuse collection on Friday of next week.
That's it?
That's it.
Very good, thank you. City managers' report.
Just one item, mayor, and that is the demo of the, what was called the pothole killer. I know you saw it, Counselor Resika saw it, demoed here in Auburn. It's a piece of equipment that I think may help the city deal with some of the potholes that, or a lot of them, that we've seen develop over this past winter. Requires only one person, they're safe inside of a truck, instead of two or three people in the street. It uses a special patch mixture that is a lot better in terms of stability and life than the cold patch, and it's a piece of equipment that we would lease, our, our own people would operate it, and just seems like, you know, something that we need to do, because clearly we're not going to have the revenue or the funds to fix all of the streets as they probably should be, because some of them really do need reconstruction. So in, you know, as part of our street program, I think, you know, this pothole fixing mechanism might be of great benefit. So we'll probably bring an item at your next business meeting to get authorization to do a lease arrangement for the equipment.
Thank you. It was, it was very impressive, the way it worked, and I'm still watching the holes, it's only a day old, but I'm still watching the potholes that were repaired, so I, I ask you to please bring that forward as early as convenient, good. Counselor?
Just, just a small comment, if I could. Doug, I know that we meet every Thursday, that's no surprise to anybody that the council meets on Thursday nights. In the future, possibly, could we have demonstrations like that on a Thursday night, so that we could all be part of that and see that, you know, like this pothole patcher was here on a Wednesday, it's tougher schedules, and it's also tough for all five of us to meet at a given time that's not a scheduled meeting, so in the future, I'd like to see if we could possibly do it on a Thursday night. And I'd love to do that. In this case, that type of equipment's in high demand, and they kind of borrowed it for a short period of time from Onondaga County and ran over here, it was relatively short notice, but it gave us the opportunity, and our public works crews, an opportunity to see it, so. I do have a video, I'll bring I do have a video, I'll bring to the next meeting, and we'll show it on the screen here.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Very good. Seeker resolutions?
None, Mayor.
Ordances?
None.
Resolutions?
None.
Local laws?
None.
Table legislation? Other business, discussion of possible surcharge for delayed water meter replacement, with our own Vicki Murphy.
You all heard Wendell give you the progress on the projects that they're working on, and one of those is the meter project, the meter replacement program. I sent everybody a memorandum, and probably, if you don't mind, I'm gonna read it so that the, for the public's benefit, and since then, I've met with Wendell, and we have some other thoughts, or some things that I've missed on here, too, so I'll explain that at the end. So I'm just gonna read this to everybody, so everybody can hear it. Background is that the council's, with the council's passage of Financial Resolution Number 102 of 2013, Wendell Energy was authorized to move forward with the meter replacement program. The meter replacement program included replacement of 5,657 residential meters with a new automatic meter reading system. During the study phase of the project, Wendell Energy concluded that the city's existing meters lost approximately 0.685% accuracy each year, or an average of 9%. And determined that replacing meters greater than 10 years old would increase revenue to the city by, this is probably an old report, 'cause I noticed theirs said 426, but $422,000 per year, and the payback for the project would be 10.7 years. That's just for the water meter project. So the program was, is, to date, we've, they've replaced 2,896 meters, this is as of, I think, Monday or Tuesday, they gave me this. 539 are scheduled, 480 have piping or curb stop issues, and 1,570 accounts have not responded to three separate mailings. Now, I asked Wendell to give me a number of revenue loss for those non-responders, and they told me that it was approximately $57,767 per year, and essentially, those people were getting approximately 9% of their water or sewer at no cost. So they also looked up some other stuff for me about other municipalities and what they've done, and I've got a list here. They've either instituted a surcharge or a fee to non-responders. Most are charging a flat fee for manual reads of 50 to $100 per read, and below is the summary, so I'll give you the summary. City of Poughkeepsie is the highest one, they're currently doing 100% surcharge on the bill, so basically, they doubled people's bills. Town of Cortland, they currently charge a flat fee of $50 per bill, and that $50 increases by $50 every period, so ours would be every quarter, so it would go up 100 the second time, then 150. Montrose, New York, currently, they currently charge a flat fee of $50 per bill. The Village of Riverside, Illinois, currently charges a flat fee of $100 per bill. City of Beacon, a $50 flat fee, or a 15% surcharge, we needed to verify that, and I didn't have it at the time of this. City of Toronto, they're currently charging a flat fee of $80 per bill, and Town of Yorktown, it's in construction, and they're looking, like we are, looking into charging a flat fee likely to be $50 per bill. Now, to encourage the city's remaining residential accounts to schedule their meter replacement, I guess we're kind of asking for your help to give us an idea of what you'd like to do with this. But after meeting with Wendell, I do have a couple of things I wanted to bring up. Those ones that the 400, 500, I'm sorry, 480 that have piping or curb stop issues, those folks, if they don't get it, and as you know, we do have a 0% loan rate now for those people, but if they choose not to do those repairs, they also will be considered, I should, I think they should be considered a non-responder, so the same type of thing. Other ones are commercial meters versus the residential. A commercial meter could, $50 would mean nothing to them, they'd just say, okay, we'll pay the $50, so maybe we better institute something different for commercial versus the residential. And then, so this has happened in some of the other communities that Wendell reminded me, that in addition to the $50, you know, per bill or whatever, when the resident, because Wendell will be going away, the program will end, and so when they go away, they, what these other municipalities are doing is saying that, because now the program's done, we have to buy that meter now, and it's not under the project. So they're also charging them for installation of the meter, the meter itself, and an administration fee. So these are the things we're looking at that maybe we should do here, and I'm looking for your help of what you want me to bring back.
Vicki, I should've asked Wendell, how long is Wendell going to be working for Auburn? What's the contract of their services?
Well, I, they're targeting the end of July, but, and it's because they don't have enough work to stay here, because we can't get these responder, these people to respond. So I'm hoping with something like this, we get people to respond and get their meters replaced, so they'll stay hopefully longer, but...
Vicki, one of the things that's appearing on the bills, and that's been a point of discussion once before, is the water meter replacement charge.
Right.
There needs to be either an explanation better, maybe in a letter, to the individual account holders about what that really is. Some people are in the impression that that should pay for everything, so that's one of the issues. The other thing is, I can understand we need to address some of these people that are basically ignoring the mailings. Perhaps, if we can determine from Wendell, when is their actual time that they plan, based on the current scheduling that they have? When do they expect that they would be wound down? And we need to maybe perhaps give a, I'm gonna say, more of a final notice before this?
If once, if you allow me to bring something back to you, and there's something passed that would say, this is now the law of Auburn, or whatever, then from that date, they would send a letter and give them 30 days to respond, and then obviously, some of those people will have probably problems with their pipes, so then you have to give them additional time after that. So that's some of the things we talked about today, but right now, they're, they were targeting the end of July to be out of here, for the meter replacement only, not for some of the other projects. This is InLine.
Yep, and I'm one of those individuals that has the pipe that needs to be replaced, and I'm not going to use the city's program, I'm just gonna pay for that out of pocket. However, I'm kind of at the mercy of the plumber for his schedule. So we need to make allowance that, yes, these plumbers are gonna become engaged in a good number of these jobs that precipitate from this activity, so we need to take, be sensitive to that issue as well.
Yeah, we discussed that today, too, so...
Go ahead, Counselor, or Counselor Camardo, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mayor, I'll go after you.
Vicki, if, let's take Councilor Zika for an example, and you make, yourself or Wendell makes contact with him and says, look, we need to replace your pipes. He recognized that you're trying to contact him, and he gets back to you and say, look, I'm waiting on a plumber, the timing, so forth and so on, my intentions are to have it done prior to July. Then there would not be a surcharge added, or have you talked about that?
He responded, so, and that's what we're, we're trying to figure out what to do, like I said, we had a meeting today, what to do with, he responded. At least he contacted them. So he's got, you know, he now knows what he needs to do. So those people, I think they're giving him 60 days plus, and then 75 to be able to contact InLine again, and that's what the letter said to them. Those have gone out.
Okay. At the same time, if Councilor Zika cannot get anyone till, let's say, the middle of August, there should be some word, some, something in there saying that after the July 31st date, there will be an additional charge, this, that, and the other thing.
We'll definitely look into that.
And I'm not saying we have to use July 31st, but if they're out of town, they're not gonna be any benefit to us to come back, so...
Again, then, if, once they're gone, the program, you know, it's done, so we'll have to do it ourselves, or hire somebody to do it, and the cost goes up, so...
Counselor Camardo?
When they leave, they're not gonna leave us the meters for the existing accounts that are available?
I believe that's part of it, because we're paying for them, so...
That's what I understand.
Yeah.
Well, just a few comments that I have. Number one, this program was launched, it's, we're putting a burden on the taxpayers or the users of the community. It was not well thought out, because I'm still getting calls from people wanting to know, is this company something that the city is involved with? So communication was horrible, it was not well done. I checked with the billing department today, they said that they're gonna put something into the, into the bills, which is a good idea, so that it's something that's in the bills, and people understand that it's something that's coming up. It's been a long winter, it's been a tough winter, probably one of the worst winters we had in years. We need to give people some time to work with it, to work with this program, not try to go out and try to fine everybody for not getting involved. We need to work with people. You know, a lot of times, unfortunately, it's forgotten that we're public servants, we're there to serve the public, and we gotta keep that in mind, so that we can give them every benefit of the doubt. Now, if this thing goes on a year, or whatever, then maybe we need to do something, but this thing's only been going on for, what, six months or so, and all of a sudden, now we wanna start fining people for not responding?
Thanksgiving, I think, around then, so...
Whatever.
Yeah.
It hasn't been a good program that, communication, I'm saying, was not a good program that was well responded by the public. I just got a call yesterday about it, once again. You know, we get so much junk mail in the mail, all the time, these postcards that came in, who knows if they're getting shuffled away or put away, but it's good that you're putting something in the water meter, but we need to work with people before we start going ahead and saying we're gonna find people. People have got difficult times out there right now, and it's a very, very tough situation with families and seniors, and some of these people in Florida, since the beginning of Thanksgiving, haven't even had a chance to call in or talk about this, so we gotta have some flexibility, we gotta take our time and make sure that we're dealing with the general public, you know, well responded way, so. I would not respond, I would not support any surcharges at this stage of the game.
Counselor Cuddy, please.
Is there a potential, since this is a, you know, I don't know how the other, how long the other cities had Wendell installing the water meters, but is like the end of July a final date, or do you think we can probably get a couple more months based on the...
I'm hoping we can.
Yeah.
That was their target date, actually, their target date, I think, was several months before that, but we got started late, and then the weather was terrible, so...
So, yeah, I mean, I second Counselor Camardo's, you know, plea for flexibility, given the nature of...
But what I would like to do is put something in place, we can extend the date, so I'd like to have something in place, so that when that day comes, we have it already in place, and because, and I'll, just a second, and it's just, because the efficiencies that we planned on for to make, make this money back, or to get the revenues, for instance, you probably, I don't know if you've gotten your meters replaced, how many here, but the people that did it and got it done, they're paying more probably now, because the meters are more, they're more accurate.
I can testify, that's correct.
The people that don't are continuing to get a break, and, I mean, we're, so we're subsidizing those people. So just remember that, although you think you're hurting some, you're hurting them, too.
Counselor McCormick?
I agree with being flexible, 'cause I've seen when we put a fine, or a fee, or a surcharge in place, it's usually the people that care that get upset, and there's really usually a good reason why they haven't. It's the people that don't respond that we really are talking about, the ones that will not respond. And if we, when the deadline is, I think, I understand what you're looking for, is what do we want to do when the date does come, whatever date is agreed on? I think it's not fair to the people that do get their meters changed and are paying for their water, and these other people that, these are the ones that aren't in Florida and aren't, don't have extenuating circumstances that are just ignoring it. They are getting a break that is not fair to the people that are following the rules and paying their fair share. So if we had something in place and even talked about it and voted on it, it gets, the word would get out that we're not gonna let it go, like a lot of the things we do let go. We, if people think we're not gonna enforce something, then what is their reason to pay attention?
And there's another item, I mean, even if this gets passed, and I had, I've drafted it, and I sent it to John Rossi, that we've had a problem over the years, that people will not give us access to their meter, we can't replace it, it's 30-some years old, those people are getting...
Free one.
Yeah. So, I mean, there's gotta be something in the code that allows us to either give them a fee or something, so that they will allow us in to replace that meter.
It's not fair to the people that do pay their taxes, if somebody doesn't pay their taxes, it's not fair to people that do pay their taxes.
And you could use an analogy, that the electric company, if they told you that they're coming in to change your meter, you're not gonna say, well, no, you can't do it. But, I mean, this is our service, we provide water, and we're losing revenue, so...
Counselor Zika?
Oh, yeah, to kind of springboard off of Counselor Camardo's comments, yes, we do have a number of people here that are on a fixed income, and it's been a brutal winter, high unexpected heating bills, things like this, so we should include, maybe in a letter, remind people about the loan program that we have in place, and provide as much of a, I'm gonna say, a prodding that we can before, you know, the, putting in, instituting, or basically put a timeline when that would be instituted. If, you're always gonna have the people that hold out, just like you alluded to, and again, it's, it's those people that tend to, you know, try to skirt the system and basically put the burden on others, so I can understand the need for this, but we need, also need to understand that everyone has circumstances that are not equitable, as far as, you know, income levels and, you know, situations, but we really need to do something long-term, you're right.
Yes.
Vicki, I'd like, first, I'd like you to start working on this, to give us a framework.
I would like to come back in two weeks, if I may, and I'll have it drafted, and I'll leave out the how much, and allow you guys to vote on that, and then maybe also the date I'll leave out, and that can also be targeted. But I'll talk to Wendell and find out, you know, when are they gonna pull out, 'cause then things change, really, they do.
Vicki, I'd like you to include a separate rate for commercial?
Yes, thank you.
And I don't know legally if we can do this, but for multiple dwellings, anything larger than, a two-unit considered as the same as a single family, but anything larger than that should be, and a different rate, not quite the commercial, but...
I agree, it's a larger meter, we're losing more water.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Counselor?
One last thing, I just wanna say, there's 1,570 people who have not responded, who are not involved, and I just don't wanna blanket everybody, because there are violators, no matter what program we do as a city. And I understand at some point in the game, we need to look at that, but right now, we got 1,507, that's a lot, that's a lot of people out there.
Yes, it is.
And I can't say that every one of them just don't wanna do it, 'cause, you know, they don't wanna pay the extra water bill, I don't think that's fair to say to that, so there is quite a few people, I wanna see that we try to work with everybody as much as we can. We haven't, we've been into this program not long, and it's been one of the worst winners that's on record.
I do know that I...
I think we've been moving in a positive area, to offer 0% for people to help people, so we're doing things in a positive way to try to encourage people to move forward in these areas, but I think we need to give it some time.
Vicki, I would also suggest, going along with everyone who's saying here, that use probably three means to try to contact an individual. For example, if you sent a letter to Councilor Zika, you followed up with a personal visit by someone from staff, and then, and finally, a phone call, something in there, so that, and then have the date and time that it was done, so no one can say that, you know, you never contacted me, whatever. We just need some verification and some way of measuring this, so...
The one, the one problem with that might be is, well, we have, some people don't live in the city.
And I understand, so, I would just like at least three means, how you try to make contact with the individual, and just no reply, or a registered letter, or whatever, but just some, some way of doing it, just so we, covering ourselves that we've done everything we can.
Okay, there have been three mailings already, and then there's gonna be another one that'll go out, once this is passed, but I guess that could be another mailing, then maybe door-to-door. Wendell did do some door-to-door, I'll find out how much they did, so...
Is it...
Counselor Cuddy was first, Counselor.
I just wanna say, I think this echoes what was said earlier, the notion of customer service, the notion of, you know, also public relations at the same time. We gotta make sure that the public knows that we are, you know, trying to upgrade the water meters, trying to upgrade the lines going into their, into their houses, so that, you know, again, they get the, you know, the best, the best water. This goes online with just upgrading our infrastructure in general for the city, so again, if customer service is, is a big focus on communicating with the people of Auburn, I think they'll be much, much happier.
Counselor Zika, please.
I was wondering if we could, instead of like a mailing or whatever, maybe one form of communication, if we could place ads and maybe even... of communication, if we could place ads and maybe even put it on the public access on a roller there that they can put it and say, "This is what we'd like to have done," just as a form that would be a little bit more, you know, repetitive. I mean, you would see these in an ad, maybe on a scroller, on a screen, maybe even perhaps in a reoccurring radio ad or something. I'm just saying, just as a constant reminder.
We did some in the local free paper so that people picked that up. We also did it on the website and I'm not sure if it was on the TV or not. I thought we did. Yes, we did.
Still have, but we could do, we could work on something that would be maybe actually like a 60-second spot where somebody could talk on there and explain to people.
So, I'll work with you on that then.
And at the same time, Vicki, maybe something in the water bills. I know they only come out quarterly, but everyone gets their water, most people get their water bill and are aware of it, so someone has to pay it.
Well, you could have the accounts that you know don't have it. You could put a little message in there and "Please call."
Yeah. Okay. Any other ideas?
Can you have that by tomorrow morning?
Yes.
We're all set. Thank you, Vicki.
Thank you.
Fiscal year 2014-15 bonding discussion by Christina Selvick. Christina?
All set. There should have been a copy of the printout on your desk and there's some available for the public, for those that want them. Thank you and good evening. Thank you for having me tonight to talk about our upcoming bond projects that the city's going to be undertaking this summer and this next fiscal year. There's actually four bond ordinances following the passing of the water project that staff is going to be bringing to council for consideration over the next couple of weeks. That is bond ordinance number two, three, four, and five. We're looking at working on our DOT projects, our annual road program, replacement vehicles for our fleet vehicles, and then a citywide facilities improvement bond. Bond ordinance number two, after speaking with our bond council, we've decided actually to wrap in the three upcoming locally administered federal aid projects into one ordinance rather than issuing separate ones, hopefully for expediency. But at the moment, we actually have three of our projects out of the 12 that staff and the engineering department are working on at the moment that are going to be going to construction this summer, one of which is South Street. So, that should hopefully make everyone very happy. These ones are federally aided and state aided to a total of 95% grant money. And they're in various stages of bidding and awarding. I believe engineering department did just open up the traffic signal bids for one of the projects, and then we still have two projects that are in the bidding or letting stage at this point that will be concluded, I believe, in later May and maybe June, so.
Christina, you mentioned once again, South Street repaving. From where to where? Could you just?
We're gonna, yep, it's coming up, actually right there. So, we're going to be doing from Lincoln Street, so right out here in front of City Hall, all the way down to the intersection with Metcalf. So, we'll be redoing that stretch. And this is mostly a paving project. It's not a reconstruction project. This is to fix unfortunately the super paved product that we were told was superior and apparently it's not. So, at that time, we're actually going to take advantage of doing water line repairs. I think most people have heard that we're going to be doing about 1.5 million in water line upgrades in that neighborhood. There are some sidewalks that we're going to be working on that have heeded over the last 10 years, painting and repairing some of the street lighting, and then looking at the curbs and a little bit of amendment to some historical signage in the district.
Before you move on on South Street, Christina, how much is the state, you said it was the recommendation of the state to put into that special paving that they put out here, correct?
Yes, that was the product that we used approximately about 10 years ago. So, it was a newer technology that we were trying out.
Are they reimbursing us for it because it was their recommendation?
They are, again, once again, paying for most of the project, so, yes, they allowed us back into the program.
Another question is, you're going to be opening up the road quite a bit to put a water line in there, aren't you? Do you want to come up, please? So, the water line had gone to the center of the road, to the right, to the left whereabouts would the water line go?
Well, the design isn't finished yet.
Okay, so it's going to be taking up most of the work that was already done there, correct? The road was completely reconstructed.
Right, they'll just do the one trench. It's a 12-inch water.
Bill, how come that wasn't done when we completely reconstructed that road?
Well, at that time, that was brought up, that's, we asked the water department, the first part, even though the, a lot of the main was put in the 1905 to 1920 time, there wasn't a lot of repair history since that time, you know? It's gotten a lot worse. And then as, also, as we've looked at the water distribution system and the outside of Auburn is getting more developed, even though right now they're currently drawn from Wasco, we really don't have any large mains in the southern part of the city. So, now we're going to extend that 12-inch line right down to.
12-inch line that's on South Street?
Well, parts of it starts off at 12, goes to an 8, and then there's some 6. So, it's undersized at the end. Every hydrant is a 6-inch line, so you can't feed too many 6-inch hydrants off one 6-inch line.
I just, I'm surprised that we did a complete reconstruction of that street and a lot of the line was not.
Back in 1974, yeah.
Pardon me?
That was back in 1974. So, that was, that's, yeah, that's been 40 years.
I'm talking about the street was reconstructed.
Okay, okay, back in 1999, 2000.
99, yeah. You're talking about 74.
Well, that's when we did the sewer separation.
No, I'm talking about the reconstruction of the street. And I'm just surprised that we didn't fix the water line back in 99 when we did complete reconstruction because you're going to be digging down, what, three, four, six feet or whatever?
It'll probably be, yeah, probably five, five to six feet in the one trench area, right?
Wasn't done, it wasn't done. We've got to do it. Thank you.
The second project in that group is the Walnut Street Culvert Project. This is something that staff has been working on for several years. So, we're excited to finally be extending the culvert so that we can now provide two-lane traffic in that area. I know it's not an overly busy neighborhood road, but it is something where we do often hear of traffic having to wait and so working on that, particularly in the area of our parks, is a good idea. So, we're going to be looking at some very minor water line and sewer line repairs, roughly of about $80,000 total, sidewalk work apparently, and then curbing, street lighting, and plantings typical of our many DOT-sponsored projects. And lastly, is a traffic signal upgrade project. So, this project inventoried our city signal intersections that were responsible for. We're going to be working on seven of those, so replacing the signals and the whole, complete part that goes along with the signalized intersections. So, those are the three projects that are proposed for bond ordinance number two. Moving on to bond ordinance number three, this is the city's annual road improvement program. This year, staff is suggesting 1.5 million for road work. This, of course, includes our milling and paving and minor reconstruction that we do within the city. This is on the city's locally-owned roads and generally it does include some minor water and sewer repairs as Mark sees needed when he's out there working with the contractors. Right now, engineering is driving all of the city roads, reevaluating what's happened over the winter time, moving some up the list, down the list, depending upon what has happened with potholes and patches and any cracking that's been going on over the winter months. So, next week, staff, next two weeks, staff will be bringing forward our proposed road list for the road program and we'll work on that at the next work session.
Just a quick question, if I can. Doug, I know we talked about this in the past and so many roads need so much repair in the city because of the rough weather we had this year. Are we going to try to concentrate a lot of this money on repairs or, you know, trying to get the roads in decent shape so that you spend as much money as you can and do as, as much as you can? Let's put it that way.
I'm sure that some of the roads will need reconstruction, but we're going to try to stretch the money as far as we can.
So, there will be some patch work done throughout the city?
I'm anticipating that we're going to have to do that in order to just improve the traveling surface, even though it's going to be more or less a temporary repair. There's just too much to do this year.
Counselor Azika and Counselor Cuddy, please.
In regards to the patches, I think we should take stock of what was patched and what was a successful patch and what was a non-successful patch. On Herman Ave, since I went to the calling hour for Counselor, ex-Counselor Smith's mother, there's a patch that failed there. It's pretty bad. We need to maybe understand, maybe there's a limit or maybe we exceeded the limit of what really is a feasible patch or whether it was, you know, a workmanship issue or simply a matter of water getting under there with the, you know, heavy freeze thaw cycles that we experienced this year. There's been a number of, and to Counselor Camardo's point, there's been a number of excavations that were, that were recoded or repaved with less than desirable results. Quite often, in fact, since he's mentioned it, I've had at least a couple of calls this past week regarding some, not only potholes, but the dips that we have now. So, I think maybe, I know engineering's taken stock, we just heard there, but if, maybe they could come up with some kind of list after, after they do their survey and see what they've identified as the more critical needs. And obviously, we should, we should focus on those. But I really think that, you know, the drivability of our roads is, is one of the first few things that people always have an issue with. So, given the, given our funding, we should try to do what we can, but understand we can't do it all.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes, from my understanding, would the 1.5 million that we're bonding for, this would probably be used for the rental of the, was it, the Pothole Killer to help, you know, with its much, according to the demo, it seemed like the technology was much sturdier and can, can take care of the potholes in a much more meaningful way. Is that, would that be for this or is that?
I think that's generally true. I would like to do it this year if we can get a machine and start before we get the new budget going. But it could be an element, I think, of the program. We've got to wait till engineering gives us their catalog of needs.
Okay, and I agree that, you know, the sooner we can, we can get that machine to work, that way we can assess how, you know, obviously, I imagine it being better than what we're doing now to fill potholes. And, you know, I mean, to, to add on to Counselor Azika's statement, I, working at Bosse's, I have, sometimes there are students that have internships from their homeschool at Bosse's and one of the students that's been working for me has, his tire blew out on the way to school. Now, luckily, it wasn't in the city of Auburn, it was just on the other side of the line, but that's not to say that there aren't a lot of potholes in Auburn. So, but these are the kinds of things that I think need to be addressed, especially around a school and students driving to and from school, Auburn High School. And the sooner we can get the, this, this machine, this truck to fix potholes, the better off we will be. And again, I do support the, the annual road program, the bond ordinance number three, and that money, I'm sure, will help go to, to not only just using, patching them in with this new technology, but also whenever we can, you know, do more maintenance so that we don't have to rely just on patching. So, I do support this bond ordinance.
I see a handover. Counselor Camardo.
Just one more thing. The excavations that have been done in the city, Doug, we're going to come up with a program. I know the code identifies how excavations will be done in the city street, how they're supposed to be compacted. I know that you talked about the DPW needed some money for compactor, how we move in with that. Is there classes being? We're going to educate our staff on how to do that properly so that it could be done in a, in a way where it's not causing problems on the street. And just the last thing, unfortunately, some of these streets that we bonded for, we haven't even paid the bond yet, and some of these streets need major repairs because of the problems that have happened with bad excavations and so on and so forth. So, I think we really need to concentrate on how, no matter if our city staff does it or if a private contractor goes out in the, in the street and does it, we need to have some concentration on how those excavations are done and they're done properly. It's identified in the code, we've got to make sure that we're following up on that.
I agree, Counselor. I've been watching potholes for the last month and a half and in earnest, as everyone has, but, you know, you're pretty much on the mark with whenever there's been a, the road has been opened up for whatever reason, that's where all of our problems stem from. You get outside the city limits where you don't have an infrastructure like that, you don't have that problem. So, we do and we have to deal with it. But for Christina and Doug, along the same lines, we are going to receive $56,000 from the state for a pothole repair. So, I would like, if we could, maybe look at how using that 56,000 upfront for repairing some of these roads with that, if we go for the Pothole Killer, if we go with that, and that may, may allow us to use money at the other end for repaving, reconstruction of certain streets or whatever, so.
Mayor, are you referencing the increase in our chips allocation this year?
I'm sorry?
The chips allocation, is that the, because that's roughly the increase for chips that we received, the?
I believe, I think so.
Yeah, okay. Because I believe the county just, I didn't get a chance to read the article, but wasn't there an article recently about them receiving some additional money as well for potholes?
I don't believe it was exactly the county, but many municipalities throughout the county and ours was for 56,000. At the same time, I see that the Anadaga County has agreed to help the city of Syracuse with $5 million of road repair. So, to our neighbors in the county, please listen, Anadaga County, maybe you could help. We don't need a $5 million boost, but maybe a one or two million would certainly help, so.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
Yes, absolutely not.
Yes.
Please continue, Christina.
Last year, at council's request, we had added back in the fleet vehicles to the capital improvement program after the winter that we had. And speaking to our supervisor at DPW, we had decided that we needed to focus once again on our city street vehicles, those that are particularly responsible for snow removal and salt spreading. All of these are existing vehicles that have, are either a major maintenance headache for Mike or have reached that point where we do need to replace them because they're constantly in the garage during the winter time. So, we're looking at two six-wheel dump trucks. These are some of the larger, these are their more versatile vehicles that they use also in the summertime for brush pickup and leaves and other things. So, there's a plow that would go on this as well as the wings to help with the snow removal. The next two, number 162 and 55, are the smaller versions, so those are the one tons, but these would also be fitted for plows and spreaders. And these help actually our downtown area where they get into streets where the larger six wheels are not able to do so. And they're very versatile. We also use them again in the summertime as well. The remaining two are the older of the refuse packers that we have. We tried to replace two about every couple of years. These are at the point where Mike has definitely requested to have these replaced at this Any questions about the vehicles? Okay.
The newer vehicles also probably won't have an issue starting up because that was an issue back?
Possibly. You know, it's just so cold that the fuel lines are what they were having problems with, but we're looking at moving a couple of vehicles around to free up some bays at the DPW, so maybe we are able to get at least three of the plows now inside some type of winterized storage area so that way we can kind of rotate the colder vehicles out with the ones that are warm to get them back out on the streets.
And I think that was an issue why some of the streets, it took so long to get the snow removed.
At one point, I remember Mike saying he had four of his plows down, either due to repairs or literally could not start them because of the severe winter. So... So keeping up with definitely our plow vehicles is very important. Watch, now we have a 40-degree weather, winter next year, hopefully.
Counsel Rizika.
Yeah, the experience he had is with the diesel trucks with the fuel, when it gets cold, it basically gelifies. And especially if there's water in it, it becomes an issue. As far as the trucks replacement, what's the fleet look like right now? Do we have an inventory of what the fleet is? So just for, like I said, we're going to be hopefully doing a long-term plan. We need to understand what's in the fleet and at what point in time that becomes, you know, this type of class where we have to replace it. So it would be nice to maybe have an inventory of the city fleet and some assessment of what the current condition is and what expected service life is remaining. I think that would be, you know, not as part of this activity, of course, but as a planning activity.
No, that sounds good, Counselor. In complete agreement, we do have a master list of all of our fleet vehicles. So we know where they're at in terms of mileage and usage and which department's responsible ultimately for either paying back the bond, that sort of thing. But that's the one thing that we definitely have been lacking is some type of master fleet management program. I know the county went through an exercise a couple of years ago, and that has definitely benefited them. So that might be something we should look at this coming year to spend some staff time on.
It certainly would say, you know, allow us to at least plan and make allowance for these replacements.
Understood. Oh, I'm sorry.
Number five.
So the last one that's being proposed is city building improvement bond. I believe the last time the city had actually bonded for building improvements was 2006, and those were actually part of energy performance improvements. So it's been a number of years since we've paid attention to roofs and bathrooms. The city hall elevator especially is in desperate need. I believe it was even down on the day for voting. So making sure that we are providing access to our handicap residents and those that have trouble using stairs to other areas of city hall is definitely very important. This is also something actually that our federal agencies have looked at and making sure we're providing access is very important to them. So they've even noted it in some of their reports that we do need to take a look at the elevator. Treasurer's Department, their service window area is desperate for improvements. The bathrooms, there's known active leaking in some of our walls that we do need to work on. And then some floor replacement that needs to be done with some of the asbestos tiles. DPW garage, we're looking at the perimeter fence. So this is something that Supervisor Talbot had presented during his operational budget. We believe actually it's a large enough project that we should put this into the bond, get the fence completely done instead of piecemealing it over a couple of years in different operating budgets. And we can talk about that. But they do need some type of security at that facility at this point. We should treat it similar to our water and wastewater facilities, which are all enclosed and secured and even with security cameras. And then Casey Park roof, Mike also spoke about this during his operational budget. He has active leaks. It's something that he's really pressing for that just cannot wait any longer. So if we're going to do a building improvement bond, we'd like to include that since roofs tend to have a longer lifespan of 10 to 20 to 30 years, depending upon the product.
Just a question, it might be included, but it's not spelled out under city hall. Is roof repair under, included in any of that?
So yes, so the exterior slate roof and the copper valleys that are part of that is what we really need to focus on. I know there's some leaks up in the attic that we do need to focus on, particularly since that's where our records are stored. Water and paper are normally not a good mix.
They don't mix, no.
So doing that would be definitely good timing, yes. And then, of course, the painting that was asked for in Mike's budget too. So we're signing up the aid that we've received from the state towards these projects. We're still waiting for that to be awarded. They only allocate so much each year at the state budget, and then they use it up on projects. And we could receive Marcheselli funding well after even the project's completed. So it just depends upon how much they allocate each year. So we're waiting on that allocation. There's the CHIPS notation for the mayor's benefit. So we did receive additional funding because of the state budget this year of a little over $56,000. So that's been added in. And then the city building improvement bond does have a 5% contingency. I'm a little nervous about the elevator and what we're going to find with our plumbing, so.
What's that, Counsel? Counsel Cuddy, sir.
A couple of questions. So from my understanding, this is my first time, you know, in, you know, voting on, or this is my first year, I should say. And can you tell me a little bit what, you know, what bond season is? And how does that play out in, like, government and as it, you know, can you explain to me what, you know, what, how this needs to go? Like, what's the kind of protocol?
Bond season?
Or like, is there a time?
The time, oh, yes, yep. And well, actually, I'll jump to that. So what staff is proposing at this point is first reading on the 24th. We have seeker compliance that must be done with each of the bonds that's required. And then hopefully adoption of seeker and bond ordinance on May 1st. There's something called an stoppable notice. This is the notice to the public that the city is issuing bonds. These have to be a public notice, they have to be issued, I think, for seven or 10 days. And they are required then to be received back by bond counsel for the sale of the bonds. So we need to have that completed for sure in May. We are on an annual, almost May 30th, May 31st bond renewal cycle. So that is our bond budget. So we need to make sure that all of this is completed roughly by that schedule. We may have a little leeway, but if the bonds are not completed in that time period, we would not be able to go out for bond proceeds at that point for these projects. There is not enough funds in general fund, water fund at this point to outright pay the consultants and the contractors for the projects.
And what is, when is bond ordinance number two coming to the council?
So we are actually going to be bringing all four for first readings on the 24th. I realize that's a lot at once, but it's unusual for us to be moving forward with three DOT construction projects in one year. It's just how the schedule's all lined up. And honestly, to make sure we're keeping track with the state and moving our projects along, we're going to look a lot better in the next five years when we're asking for additional projects, when they do the call for the list. So we need to keep up with that.
And you, I'm sorry, you skipped a slide?
Yes.
Did you want, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't mean to.
With our comptroller's help, she did prepare some rough amortization schedules. And the last line where it says 2030, you know, it actually goes out to 2044. So it's some of those, the bond ordinance number two, and I think it is bond ordinance number two is a 30-year one because of certain components in there, mostly for the water line. We tend to bond 30 years for the water lines and 15 for the streets. So, but that gives you a rough idea of what the principal, the interest on payments would be for each of those ordinances. That's what I had to present tonight. So I look forward to working with you over the next couple of weeks on these projects and answering your questions and hopefully getting to work on our roads and water lines and other projects this summer.
Thanks, Christina.
Sure, thank you.
Counsel, other business, your turn.
I'll go first. It'll be quick.
Sure.
Doug, we had some conversations to begin this week about, you probably heard me talk about this last week, about a fiscal plan. As we know, the city's indebtedness is about $70 million as we speak. We're looking to take on some major capital improvements for the city, which Christina identified tonight was about $8 million. These will go out as far as 2044. And could you explain to council, we had this conversation the other day about, I guess you and the comptroller are working on a long-term fiscal plan to identify. Unfortunately, the city's revenues are down a little bit. Hopefully, we can get those back up. Our expenses are keep going up every year, labor, you know, projects like this will keep climbing. We'll have more debt service that we'll have to talk about and look at. But it's not a one-year plan, not a two-year plan, but five- and 10-year plan that we need to look at and how we can pay these projects, pay for these projects.
Yeah, yes, Counselor. One of the things we're looking at is doing a five-year financial plan with projections. It'll actually be a model so we can look at variables in terms of, you know, what things cost or if we issue new debt and things like that. So it'll be a forecasting tool. That is kind of secondary to getting the budget done. So most of the focus for the next couple of months is get the budget in good shape, get it to council, hopefully get it approved, and then move into doing the advanced long-term financial planning, including looking at capital over a five-year period through the capital improvement plan that the council adopts. That's going to be brought to you for an update as part of the budget package. And our financial planning would forecast, you know, the ability for the city to either issue debt or have to wait for grants, whatever the conditions might be, to pay for some of these future projects. I think the problem we see now is things have, and you all have inherited this, things have kind of gotten jammed up. And it seems like every time we turn around, everything has to be done right away. And that's, that is unfortunate. But I think with a longer-term plan and getting over this hump of a backlog of much-needed projects and equipment, we'll be able to manage it a lot better.
I just wanted to point out that they need to go hand-in-hand with the long-term projects and having the fiscal plan in place to figure out how we're going to pay for some of these projects and the debt we're assuming on some of these major projects that need to be done. So thank you for your comments on that.
So Doug, you think we would have a draft of this shortly after the budget? Or within months after?
Before you get, but it's going to be, the kind of model I want done is going to be fairly sophisticated. So we'll look at variables, including things like wage rates, staffing levels, a lot of things like that. I want to be able to plug in numbers and say, okay, if we do no wage increases, here's the impact. Also, variables include pensions, health insurance, things like that, power utility costs. So I want to make sure it's robust enough to do some good forecasting of different scenarios. So I don't want to commit to a timeframe yet. But hopefully, I would say if we can do it within six months after we get the budget done.
Just a, you know, it's not going to be more than, you know, a calendar year after?
No, I'd like to get it done so that it's a tool to be used in the budget after this one that we're working on.
Speaking of the budget, we had a discussion about rollups and where we're at now. Is there a snapshot yet available?
We're getting close. I would say under a million-dollar gap at this point. I've got one more refinement to do with Laura, we met today to talk about it. She needs to be, meet with Chief DeGert, and then we'll finalize that. So we'll have it for you next week.
Are you cutting yourself short with a meeting on Tuesday night next week?
I don't know if I'll have it for the meeting. I think the original date was 18th of April.
I didn't want you going on a limb and...
No, we've been, we've made a lot of progress, so I'm very pleased. We've got, I think it's coming together fairly well.
A couple of things. Any words from anyone regarding the SAFER grant from the federal government? Any feedback?
No.
No, is there something we could do as a council, a letter, a phone call to perhaps Senator Schumer?
I was, I was just, I know Ian was here earlier, and I was thinking we could drag him up here, but from Congressman Fa's office. I guess, you know, we can write letters, you could write letters individually as council members. We could, I could write one for the mayor. Probably doesn't hurt to keep pestering them. I know Christina's after them all the time, as is Jeff DeGert, so.
Does the mayor's office have like a red phone, a Schumer hotline or?
If counsel, so desires, I'll ask Doug and Christina to put something together and go out by the first of the week. So if that's your desire, to all our federal officials, we need, we need help, we need it now, so.
One more thing.
Please, then.
I went and did some, I figured last week, Counsel Rizika brought up a point about executive session, and I saw an opinion from Robert Freeman. Here is the results, and again, it's a, it's an, it's an opinion basically that was drafted in 2001. This is the attachment that was sent to me. And I figured that would be good for the council to look at.
All right, right now, I take exception to the first paragraph of this. I did not accuse anyone, I merely stated that these were out. I did not make any accusations. I take exception to this first paragraph.
Oh, this is, this is the email that I, that I...
This is what you sent?
This is not my, this is not the reading. What I did was I basically am giving you a, giving you the opinion and the letter that was the correspondence between myself and the state, so. It's 13 pages, we don't have to read it now, but this is, I just want to make sure that I went ahead because again, I was concerned after last week's meeting, the implications of what transpired. So I needed to make sure that I went ahead and did some research myself.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Anything else?
The only thing I was going to say, Mayor, if we're writing Senator Schumer's office, if possible, we could put some of the other projects that we're trying to look for some money possibly for. I know SAFER grant would be number one that you'd be asking for. But if possible, we have numerous projects that are going to be happening in the city that they always seem to find money somewhere for things. So let's put it all together and ask for everything we can possibly ask for, correct?
Christina, even if you want to do it in separate letters, I'm getting good at signatures, so.
Anything else? Do we have a request for executive session?
I have.
No? This time I entertain a motion to adjourn.
This is record time, see?
Did you win the bet?
I don't want to jinx ourselves. Motion to adjourn by Counsel Camardo, seconded by Counsel McCormick. Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
It's what we call a correction meeting to make up for the last six. Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Rizika?
Yes.
Before I vote, I want everyone to notice it's still light out, so hurry home. Aye. We're adjourned.